Mr. Thomas, April 1st is still a week away. Okay, Mr. Rice will ready me up. Mrs. Vanis Clemmons?
Here.
Ms. Metzelski? Mrs. Longren?
Here.
Mrs. Jacob?
Here.
Mr. Cormac?
Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
And Mr. Wurz.
I believe we're actually going to change the order before public comment to get a couple items out. You said you want to get pictures out of it.
Mr. Miller, the question is, based off the starting time of the meeting, would be appropriate to move public comment to after the reports? So it's going to be for any voting item. That way we could do the president's report, the superintendent's report, and the student liaison report. Because the majority of people in the audience are here for the superintendent's report.
It is acceptable to do that so long as there's no voting item.
Okay, great.
All right, can we move on to the president's report? All right. Every student's success should be the reason why we make our decisions and answer questions we do. Making the best results, no matter the question, whether it's academic, security, curriculum, finances, or technology, our students must remain our top priority. I'd like to share several new beginnings with you this evening. Middle school baseball is one of the district's most recent new beginnings. After decades without a middle school baseball program and a two-year drought of having a freshman baseball team, we now have both. The participation rate for teams has seen a drastic increase. The beginning of a new era in Penrich baseball. We need just a few more wins to make this season look better. We begin this week with another new beginning. Teachers earning credits for professional learning time during the afternoons working with others on the various subcommittees for block scheduling, firm advisory, curriculum, communication, flex time, scheduling, professional learning subcommittees. We begin the process moving forward to implement block scheduling to serve every student's needs at once for professional and personal growth. Technically built to remain financially healthy, we continue to provide all the necessary programs and services for our students to foster successful journeys during and after high school. We are keeping our finger on the pulse to stay on track academically for the success of every student. With spring break coming around the corner, we're wishing everyone takes a little bit of time that they can spend with their families and friends, and if you happen to be at a baseball field, it's even better. You know what I'm saying? Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. McCullough, do we have the presentation? I'm going to begin while he's calling that up. We're going to start tonight by congratulating this year's three Friends of Education. They're being celebrated by the Penbridge Community Education Foundation. Each year, the PCEF holds nominations for these awards, and they come from Penrich staff and community members. The three winners this year are Gary Schiff, a retired teacher and volunteer at Bedminster Elementary School. The nomination form for Mr. Schiff said, "Mr. Schiff is a blessing to the Bedminster community, and our students are luckier and more successful for it." Not only does Mr. Schiff generously donate his time and talents as a tutor for our students, he also contributes a yearly monetary donation to the school for the betterment of the Bobcats. For the past 13 years, he has freely volunteered his time in tutoring our students up to six hours a week. Like a postman, he comes rain or shine, always with a smile and flexible ease. While he works with students who are developing as learners and in need of a little extra push, students view their time with Mr. Schiff as special, fun, and safe. It's not often that you see a retired teacher continue to teach for an additional 13 years, which demonstrates Mr. Schiff's commitment to public education and love for this community. The second recipient is Dr. Kathy Scheid, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. In her nomination, in part, it said, "I write with confidence of the profound and far-reaching impact Dr. Scheid has had on the staff, students, and community of the Penrich School District through her eight-year tenure in our district. Her focus has held steady on the importance of student success to an education built on high expectations and unwavering support. Furthermore, Dr. Scheid has positively impacted individuals throughout the district to empower them to the same mission, support, and the success of all students." The third winner is Ms. Erin Riker, Instructional Coach at the elementary level. Her nomination said, "I can assure the committee there is no more passionate, selfless, and talented individual that better represents the values of the district than Erin Riker. For many years, Erin taught third grade at Dibler, and her classroom was a fun-yet-focused place to be, filled with students embarking on challenging tasks but also enjoying their time at school as well. As an instructional coach with an unrivaled personal touch, her interpersonal aptitude in working with others is without comparison at Penrich, a skill I seek to emulate myself. She is the largest reason that Penrich's middle school STEM program has grown to become one of the finest in Bucks County." These three individuals will be honored at the annual Lovely Evening Event on April 25th at the Sellersville Theater. I would encourage everyone to attend, not only to honor these three, but to hear many of our students and their talents in the performing arts. The performances begin at 6:30 p.m. For more information or for tickets, you can visit our Penrich website and go to the community tab. I believe only Dr. Scheid is in attendance tonight, but I would ask her if she would stand, and we could thank all three winners. Kathy, it's well learned. Next, we'd like to celebrate Penrich sophomore Anjala Verma, who has been named the 2023 Pennsylvania Association of Student Council State President. Ms. Verma was unable to attend this evening but shared the program. I mean, the photo that you can see, it was from a meeting where her term as state president began. She says, "As president, I'm responsible for duties such as being a voice on the executive board as a voting member, being the student chair of the Constitution and Policy Committee, and working with the State Board of Education to select our student representatives. On the board, we listen, observe, and provide input on issues regarding leadership and education in PA, and develop quality programs that engage and train students and adults on leadership initiatives and activities. Anjali recently met with us and told us how excited she was to be working with the Penrich schools, the community, and districts across the state on a mental health initiative that will improve resource access and many other projects. We look forward to working with Anjali through the next year. Congratulations." It's always awkward to get to do when we're not in the room.
She's actually not here because she's playing goalie right now.
There you go. That's right. Next, we want to congratulate Senior Robin Reed on being named a National Recognition Scholar. This award is given by the College Board and is a recognition of her academic achievement on AP and/or the PSAT exams. Ms. Reed wrote an essay highlighting her experience growing up in a small community and her many works across the Perkasy area. Additionally, she has also earned a place in the University of Alabama's highly selective Blount Scholarships Program, where she will attend and major in political science starting this fall. I believe Ryan Robbins here, and if she is, could she come down and be congratulated? I knew you'd be in Alabama close. I'm going to move down here now because we're going to have lots of pictures coming through. Every year, Penrich students who attend the Upper Bucks Technical School have the opportunity to take part in a Skills USA competition. The Skills USA Championship are career competition events showcasing the best career and technical education students in the nation. The philosophy of the championship is to reward students for excellence, to involve the industry in directly evaluating student performance, and to keep training relevant to employers' needs. The following Penrich students took first place recently in their respective competitions and now move on to the state competition that will be upcoming in the next few weeks. We then will have a chance to recognize those students at a future school board meeting for those accomplishments. But I do want to recognize them and give you a sense for the various programs that are being recognized. Jules Strauss for Action Skills, Brian Toma for Automated Refining Technology, Ireland Grushesky for Crime Scene Investigation, Marley Geis, Megan Smith, also for Crime Scene Investigation. I do believe that they were the first all-female team to win Skills USA. Troy Kirkwood for Graphic Communications, Quentin Mueling for Heel Knowledge Bowl, Alex Merrick for Job Skills Demo, Sage Ziminski for Related Technical Math, Seth Karelart for Teamworks, Josh Gibe and Mason Lindquist also for Teamworks, and Jason Gilbert for Welding and Fabrication. I don't believe there are, but if any of those students are in the room, if you would come down, we would like to congratulate you. So this is one of the crime scenes. This is Megan. Would you like to lay down a tape around? Blood spatter would indicate. Oh, no, never mind. All right. Finally, Penrich continues to impress on our athletic stage, and many of our winter sports athletes are here tonight. Again, our tradition is, after every season, we recognize any of those sports teams, either individually or as teams that have qualified for state competition, and read a little bit about their accomplishments. So, as I mentioned, your teams, you would start coming forward, because there are teams involved, and then I'll brag about all the different things that you've done. So first, let's recognize our wrestling team as they come down. They were the... They were, for the first time in Penrich history, they were the District One Duel Champs. They were District One East and North Section Champions. I'm not sure how you get to do that in two different sections. They were the top eight in the state duels. They have been back-to-back suburban league colonial division champs. We had 10 wrestlers who went to regionals, five wrestlers who went to states. We had two medalists at the state competition, which means they were in the top eight in their weight class. One is Colby Martinelli, who came in third place, and Talon Hogan, who came in sixth place. We had two NHSCA All-American Medalists, two Courier Times Intel All-Stars. We had five Pennsylvania wrestling-ranked District One wrestlers with three honorable mention. And we had the PI Southeast Regional, SOL Colonial Division, and Courier Times Intelligencer Coach of the Year. Let's congratulate the wrestling team. Mrs. Cullen always just randomly picks one child to take a picture for each team, so we'll see who she picks from Boys' Winter Track next. So next, let's recognize those members of our Boys' Winter Track team that made it to state. First, Jared Hess placed second in the state for the triple jump. He was also voted second-team All-State and a national qualifier. Our Boys' 4x200 state meet team, and they were also a nationals qualifier. The 4x200 team is Chase Marshall, Dom Santos, Ethan Caravessi, and Logan Lamanna. Our Boys' 4x800 team is also a national qualifier. Tommy McGann, Dan Lera Lozana, Logan Siegfried, and Ryan Stauffer. Logan Lamanna was a state qualifier in the 400, and Nick Linder and Dan Lera Lozana were national meet qualifiers in both the freshman 400 and the mile. Let's congratulate our Boys' Winter Track team. They are running laps. Next, our Girls' Winter Track team. The 4x800 relay team of Nora Ridding, Kagan Smith, Natalie Pappas, and Ashley Landis came in third place at the state championship and were honorable mention All-State. Ashley Landis, as an individual, was seventh place in the 800 Open. The distant medley relay of Ashley Landis, Kagan Smith, Nora Ridding, and Grace Santos also came in seventh place. So we qualified for states in three events, and we came away with medals in all three events. Let's congratulate the Girls' Winter Track. Yeah, that's right. To hold the medals. Congratulations. Next are the five swimmers from the Girls' Swimming Team. They competed in the district championship and qualified for the state championship. They are Addie Gargus in the 200-yard freestyle relay, Ally Ricardi, 200-yard freestyle relay, 50-yard freestyle, and 100-yard freestyle, Emily Myers for the 200-yard freestyle relay, and Lexi Hulse for the 200-yard freestyle relay. Let's congratulate these ladies. Next is our Girls' Bowling Team. They were the American Conference Champions and American Conference Sportsmanship Award, and also the Suburban One League Champions overall. And we'd also like to congratulate Mary Beth Baker, who won her fourth consecutive Suburban One High School League Single Championship. She was also a PA Eastern Regional Qualifier for the fourth year in a row, and finished in fourth place in the state championship. Let's congratulate our bowling team. Mary Beth, are they all yours? That picture?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Okay. All right. Next is our Unified Bachi Team. After an exciting season and a regional championship, many of you probably have seen recently on a local news outlet that our Unified Bachi Team competed last week in the state championship. We had a fan bus go out. We definitely had the loudest support. For a great show of support for the team, and they took fourth place in the state of Pennsylvania. Let's recognize and congratulate our unified bachi team. That is the superintendent's report. Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, everybody. Next, we have the student liaison.
Thank you. And I have never seen a school so unified as to cheer on the Unified Bachi Team, so that was quite an experience to see this past week. Along with their celebrations, Penrich Student Council held the first annual Women Supporting Woman Conference, where we had many female leaders throughout our community come to Penrich High School, where select females were chosen by faculty to attend this session during RAMS period, along with a complimentary breakfast provided by our amazing cafeteria staff. Some of the incredible professionals that attended this session included a pediatric occupational therapist, a civil engineer, an executive officer at the U.S. Marine Corps, and many others to demonstrate utmost female leadership. Along with this, Penrich Student Council is still planning end-of-the-year celebrations, notably Mr. Penrich, and we have other events in store. And outside of Penrich Student Council, along with Unified Bachi scoring throughout their competition, we would like to shout out the hunchback of Notre Dame Cast, and their ticket sales just went live for April 27th. And the Penrich Debate Team will be competing this Wednesday in their finals competition.
Thank you.
I just want to recognize the fact that Dr. Scheid was the keynote speaker for the Women Leadership Conference.
All right, we're jumping back up to public comment. According to Policy 903, public comment, which is limited to three minutes, should be directed to the residing officer rather than individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. Yes, specifics. There we go. Specific comments regarding particular individuals must be communicated privately to the school board and superintendent via email at PSD@penrich.org. First up, we have Adam Metcalf, East Rock Hill.
Hello again. Adam Metcalf, East Rock Hill. So thank you for the discussion on Policy 119. But you didn't address the core. You kind of just flitted over the core issue. What actually are controversial issues? I wouldn't have thought a year ago that child labor laws would be controversial, or calling storming of the Capitol controversial. But in the last, I mean, our history teachers have specifically been told not to talk about Capitol. And it's controversial issues are educational. I mean, that's like, there's nothing more educational than what's going on in the world around the kids. And you are doing the students a disservice by not allowing the controversial issues to be talked about. You're handcuffing our teachers with vague policies, and yeah, we shouldn't be doing that. Our students should be our top priority, but instead, we are prioritizing parents' political views. Please put education over politics, and really do keep the students in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kevin Foster.
Kevin Foster, Hilltown Township. First, I wanted to start out, you know, from the previous policy committee meeting, there were two board members that didn't show up on time, so they missed all the public comment from community members. And we all made time to come here on our schedules so that we could talk to you guys. If at one point you don't show up and don't hear anything, it's kind of disrespectful. So starting with that, on Policy 119, you guys still didn't get to the point of what happens if a kid... So if my son passes out a survey to his peers, how, what's going to happen if he doesn't have parental approval or gives it to somebody who has not opted in? So how's my son going to be punished? So I'm really curious about that. I mean, you just glazed over that and moved the policy to full board for approval. I don't know how you can do that without actually writing the text. There were a ton of questions up here. I didn't write them all down, but a ton were not answered. My second question on Policy 119 and other generic policies that I've seen the board move through the board over the last few months. I read in the news a lot about external entities that are secretly writing policies behind closed doors. And I was curious, has the board, this board, and I'll ask you, Mr. Rice, as the chair, has this board ever worked with Independence Law Center to write policies behind closed doors for Penrich School District?
There's no comment.
Mr. Foster, it's public comment, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just waiting. I'm watching my clock to see if there'd be a response. Okay, I'll take silence as affirmation. Additionally, I did have a question to previously controversial issues, resource materials back during a board meeting on September 27th. A board member read a specific quote about sold by Patricia McCormick, and it was you, Ms. Longren. And I'm curious, where did you get that "sold by Patricia McCormick"? So I'm curious as to where you got that quote from.
Mr. Foster, you're supposed to direct it to the residing officer.
I've studied the Pennsberry case, Mr. Rice, and as I understand, that's not enforceable. And I would appreciate if I could have my time back.
Okay, you have public comment. It's not public question and answer, so please just make your comment.
Okay. So I'm curious, Ms. Longren, where you received that quote from specifically, and if you could provide that for public, for the public to understand where you read that from.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Thank you for the comment.
Next up, we have Lee Rush. Lee Rush, Percy.
I'm glad you have a clock up there. That's helpful. I don't have to worry about my time.
Great idea. Took us a couple of years. Let's see. Oh, I have to start, and then it starts? All right, well, I'm assuming it's going to... There we go. Okay. Good evening. I'd like to just make a couple of comments about the policy process, the committee. I think it was originally scheduled for March 6th, if I'm not mistaken. And then it was moved. I think it was moved into 5:30 tonight, and then 6:30. And I guess I just want to encourage you all to, I've said this often, just to slow down. What happened tonight is unfortunate. You got yourself boxed into a pretty important discussion, went overtime, people started rolling in the meeting. I couldn't hear Mr. Russell's comments. And by the way, thank you so much. It sounds like you did some homework. I really, I wanted to hear everything you said. And then you got yourself jammed up to like, okay, just move this word, and then there's still some debate. I don't see the urgency. So I'm just going to encourage you to just be mindful that these decisions carry so much weight. I don't understand the urgency. So, for whatever that's worth. The other comment I wanted to make is about this letter that was sent to you all by a colleague of mine, colleagues, Diane Rosati, Rachel Neff, and Donna Duffy. These are three folks that work for Bucks County Government, the Drug and Alcohol Commission, the Behavioral Health Development Programs, and the entire County Division of Human Services. I guess the letter was addressed to Dr. Bolton and copied on the board. And I understand, Mr. Miller, this is a public comment, but the questions are still able to be asked, and truth discretion is whether or not they're answered. I'm curious if you never ever made a response to Diane, whether or not you got the letter. Dr. Bolton?
Just, Mr. Rush, if someone doesn't answer, please just move on. If you agree, please.
I'll also assume an answer is a no on that one. I'm discouraged by that. I'm assuming, Mr. Rice, you did not answer either on behalf of your role as president. It's embarrassing to me as a Penrich citizen that people that I've known for almost 30 years work every day on behalf of children all over Bucks County, and they don't get the courtesy of a direct response. The information in the survey to follow, Mr. Russell, your logic about why we ask questions about our children, and if we don't... about our children, and if we don't do this, would we not just know what kids are like in the country, if you use CDC survey, it's the same answer of why we do all the assessment with our kids here academically. We would never depend on national numbers for how kids are doing academically. It makes no logical sense that we do that with their behavioral health. So please take those, take those comments under consideration. Thank you.
All right, that is what we have, the public comment, the CD, moving on to the consent calendar. I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through I. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All right, motion, give a second. Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the activities, committee report, Mr. Chigman.
Okay, I just have two quick things, I'd like to make a motion to approve two overnight trips. One is the FBLA trip to Hershey, Pennsylvania. One is a ski and snowboard trip to somewhere in the western United States next February.
A second. Got a motion and a second. Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next activities committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. Chigman. Moving on to curriculum, Ms. Blonrenn.
Okay, we have two things on here for tonight. A motion to approve the following curriculum improvement proposals, A through B listed below, Earth and Space and Environmental Science.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, a motion to approve the 339-K through 12 guidance plan.
A second. Got a motion and a second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next curriculum committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 3rd.
And moving on to the facilities, Mr. Formack.
Good evening, we have two items on facilities tonight. One is approval of obsolete items, A through C.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second on our agenda is a motion to approve North Penn Water Authority to enter West Rock Hill Elementary School to property for the purpose of conducting an appraisal to determine the value of utilizing a portion of the property to conduct the water tower. It's Lord Shum.
A second. Motion is made and seconded. Comments or questions?
Just want to clarify, it's just to get appraisal.
Yes. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next committee meeting is April 11th, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Formack. Moving on to finance, all right, got a motion, China Page. We have a motion to approve the Bucks County Technical School 2023-2024 budget. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
I have a second, got a motion and a second. Comments or questions?
I have some questions and comments. I know that there were many questions asked about the UBCTS budget at the last finance committee meeting, and it was agreed upon by the committee to not forward this to be voted on this evening because of the outstanding questions, and the public, as far as the public was informed, was that this wasn't going to be moving forward tonight for a vote, and I think that's the right call, given the comments by our business director, the superintendent, questions from school board members, the fact that the budget isn't complete, and that answers to some of the questions that were asked did come back, but they only came back to the superintendent and then were shared with board members just today. So the public has had no, hasn't had the benefit of hearing the answer to those questions, they haven't heard the discussion, and when you're talking about a budget that's a 23% increase over what Penrich was responsible for last year, I think our responsibility to the community is to do what we said we would do, which is have this discussion at the April Finance Committee meeting. It won't harm the process of passing the budget at all, and we have these things that are outstanding that the public needs to hear about. I think that we should hold the JOC to the same standard as we do Penrich, and I think that what we have here, we have great success. For six years, we haven't raised taxes, we've had a balanced budget with no deficits, and we should expect the same from the JOC and expect that we're going to have a complete budget that we can all consider, discuss, and allow the public to see and make comments on before we commit the Penrich taxpayer funds to it. You know, we had, last year, I remember, we had some curriculum improvement proposals for courses for PE, and there was an item on there where, you know, the gym teachers were asking to buy a couple of medicine balls. These medicine balls were about $50 each, and we had an extended conversation about whether we would need those $50 medicine balls. So I would just ask that we do what we said we were going to do, don't vote on this to pass this budget tonight, and give the public the opportunity to see the answers to the questions and get the answers to the questions that haven't been answered yet, and then do the approval for the budget.
So just a few points about the budget. One, there were six board members in attendance at the finance committee meeting, four were fine with the budget. Two, said that they wanted to see the budget and be able to go through it on their own, and that presenting the information was not helpful to them. I forwarded the budget to board members last Wednesday, it was then voted on in a public meeting where it was fully discussed and presented again at the tech school on Thursday. This actually does hold the tech school to the exact same standard as Penrich, it's a balanced budget, which has not been the case in the past. In the past, it borrowed significantly from fund balance, that was something that we had been moving away from, and that had been a long-term plan here in Penrich that we actually had initiated at the tech school some years ago, and now we're finally at that point. If you look at from budget to budget, last, from the current year's budget to the proposed budget for next year, the budget actually went down 0.96%. When you parse out things like the Ag building and the cafeteria and all of the new programs, and look at how much is just operational increases, the increase to the budget from last year is actually only 1.53%. If you add in all the new programs, you got to remember that we are drastically increasing the number of kids, we had significant waiting lists of kids who wanted to get into the tech school, and so all of those kids, we were opening up new programs, adding new sections to give them the opportunity to be able to be at the tech school. If you include all of those new programs, that's what brings your increase to 6.79%. That's all, we're sending more kids, they're hiring more teachers, they're opening new programs, having all new materials for all of those additional kids. It costs money to do that. If you look at just operational expenses and parse out those programs, again, the increase, apples to apples, is 1.53%. This actually does the same exact thing that we do in Penrich, and the big problem has been the recurring borrowing from fund balance year after year. This is, this is ending that, and we're not going to be borrowing from fund balance, so we won't be, we'll be paying our full bill. So when you look at that increase, the increase is just that we're not having a structural deficit, and we're not pulling from fund balance, which is unsustainable. This gets us on the right path with a balanced budget, everybody's paying their fair share, they've been borrowing from fund balance, and now this is where we're going to be. So this gets us in a good place, again, first balanced budget, 1.53% apples to apples, it's really a no-brainer. And again, board members also had said that, you know, they would follow up with Mike Carrera for questions, which is why I made sure to forward this to everybody last Wednesday. You know, I'm not sure if anyone sent additional questions to Mike Carrera, but it was, it was not something that was brought to my attention, I'm not aware of him receiving any additional questions regarding the budget presentation that was sent to them, and again, presented at three different meetings.
Well, with the JOC meeting, with all due respect, is not a Penrich Finance Committee meeting that Penrich taxpayers are, you know, made aware of. If we have a conversation where questions are asked at a Penrich Finance Committee meeting, then those questions should be answered for the Penrich community members. They didn't know to go to this tech school meeting. And also, that 1% number that you cite is kind of misleading, because the way that that was able to be achieved was that there were expenses last year that were one-time expense for an agricultural building that you don't have this year. So they were taking funds, you know, spending money on things, keeping that item essentially, maintaining that number there to fill in other items to cover with those funds. So it's a little misleading to say.
That's actually not accurate.
Megan, I spoke with Dr., I spoke with.
It actually parsed out. It parsed out, I'm just telling you, that's not inaccurate.
Quite at length already, and I did have a conversation with the superintendent today after we got that email, and this is an email, again, with questions that were asked, and were supposed to be answered to the Penrich community, that were not answered. The Penrich public has not seen the answers to those questions, and nobody's arguing with the fact that when you have more students go to the tech school, it's quite obvious, yes, you are going to have more expenses, but what was budgeted for here in Penrich is not what we're being asked to pay now, it's quite an increase. And anytime we have something like that, we should talk about it, and as I understand it, and Dr. Bolton can correct me if I'm getting this wrong, what we're going to end up with is either going to be $300,000 or $600,000 above what we budgeted for. And if we're going to have that happen, we should give the public in the Penrich community the opportunity to see it. There's no urgency to pass this, or, you know, to approve this on this very night, when, if we do it at the April Finance Committee meeting, allow people to see it in a real way, allow them to parse out all those details that you're talking about, and then we can approve it at the April Board Meeting with no problem. It won't affect the tech school at all. And in my conversation with the superintendent, I was told, again, in addition to those things that were answered today, that only we board members got to see and not the public, there are still outstanding questions, still incomplete parts of this budget, and we all want the tech school to be very successful. I know there's a narrative trying to be thrown out there that anybody that asks questions about, you know, what's going on at the tech school is a tech school hater, which I think is absurd. We actually want to make sure that the tech school is operating well, and that our students will be well-served there, and if we are responsible with our money as we are here, we'll be able to provide even more for them in the future. So all I'm asking is to give the public the opportunity to hear all of the details. I don't understand why that's such a big ask, especially when we have nickled and dimed and really interrogated people over here in Penrich over the smallest items, $50 items, but yet, when it comes to this amount of money, there's an unwillingness to have the public be fully informed. That's all I'm asking, is for the public to be fully informed, and the public was not, because the public did not receive the information that we received just today.
No new information was shared today, all of it was in the presentation that was sent on Wednesday, all of it was presented to the board. I know you weren't able to make that meeting for whatever reason, but it was presented here at Penrich.
Factually, was there new information? And is there incomplete, are there incomplete parts?
The 1.53%, just to be clear and accurate, parsed out the Ag building by the request of the business administrators and the superintendent. That is not a factor in that number that was pulled out. This is literally, this does not take that, this pulls that out of it, and is strictly looking at the operational increases, so it's just not an accurate number.
I just, I had a couple of concerns on this. The one is that for our budget, the school district's budget that we've been looking at, we're looking at an increase of only 2.95%, and the increase for our school district is going to be 22.95% over last year. What's been budgeted in some of the assumptions, and it's a longer process for us than the school district, is just a 4.1% increase for the tech school, and so now that has to be revised, because it's going up 22.95%, which seems unusually high in one year to make that adjustment. Now, I do applaud the tech school, because last year we didn't even get a balanced budget. So this year, we have a balanced budget, which is great, I'm glad that they, they're changing the process by which they do that. But I raised the concern before, and I didn't realize that I was supposed to follow up individually, I thought somebody was going to get back to me, but since we're on a fiscal year, and our fiscal year ends the end of June, and we're not going to have any more classes, we know what our expenses are running forward, it would seem to make sense to be able to have a projected fiscal year ending 2023, what we anticipate it being, and then we can base the budget for next year off of that number. Because if I look at the numbers in the past, you know, there's a huge variation between what the actual was in '21-'22 versus the budget for '22-'23, it was a 24% increase then. So if we don't have a good number on the budget, if the budget is inflated for whatever reason, to say we're only, it's a decrease of 1.1% off of that budget is really meaningless if the budget isn't based upon actual numbers. And again, because we're on a fiscal year, this is the last quarter, we're not going to add any classes, we're not going to add any students, it shouldn't be that difficult for the tech school to be able to project out to the end of June what we anticipate the expenses being, and then we can base the budget for this, for 2023-24 on that projected year-end actuals. And that's all that I asked for, but I still have not received that.
Mr. Russell, we had several presentations that same night with budget presentations from Penrich, and I didn't see you ask our business administrator for that same information. You don't use actuals in the budget year that you're in, and those actuals were not in there.
No, you're wrong, Megan. We did have those projections in ours, but if you've been part of a budget process, that's what you do. You don't base a budget on a budget, because those budget numbers could be inaccurate. So you base a budget.
Those actuals were reviewed.
Well, the actuals were not presented.
They were reviewed with the business managers.
Well, what is, what, I don't understand what the Russia, so for our budget in Penrich, we take at least four months, right? We were asked, we were shown the result two weeks ago, I had no idea it was going to be up for a vote tonight, I assumed we would have more time to discuss it. Of course, it has to be approved, but it certainly doesn't have to be approved tonight, but since we have a new guy running it and a new CFO there, and some misinformation or lack of information from last year, I don't think it should be an issue to delay it for a month to, so we can take the time to do this right. We're asking for a 22% increase with new people running it. I don't question them, I think they're doing a great job, but there's a lot of question marks, and to rush this through tonight is just bad fiscal management, so.
All right, for the record, we do have a motion on the floor, we have a second. I have invited all board members to all JOC meetings since the beginning of time, since all of you have been on the board.
Can we participate at the meetings? Can we participate at the meetings?
All right, so we.
We can't vote at that meeting.
We can watch, right? We can do public comment, but inviting us to come to the meeting is of no effect.
And that's why we have representatives on the JOC. We send three Penrich school board members to represent our interest at the JOC, and I think it's, this comment keeps being made, well, you could go to the IU meetings, you could go to the JOC meetings. I think that's kind of disrespectful to the Penrich taxpayer, because we have discussions here for a purpose. There is a process for a purpose. The Penrich taxpayer should be fully informed about what is going on with their money. And again, to say that I didn't follow up is not true. Dr. Bolton is the superintendent of record at the tech school, so he is the person that has the answers. What I got back, when I, in my discussion, was that there are incomplete parts, there are questions that have not been answered, there are items on the budget that have not been explained as to what the money is going to be spent on. So I don't understand the defensiveness, and I don't understand why this needs to be just ramrodded through when we had a conversation at our Penrich Community, or Penrich School Board Finance Committee, where we said, where lots of questions were raised, and again, it's information that the public has not been given, and saying that they could simply go to the JOC meeting is not, is not an acceptable substitute. Those questions were asked here in this form for this board to consider, and we should have the ability to do that. And again, it actually has no effect on the tech school whatsoever for this conversation to take place in April. Our business manager wasn't comfortable with it, the superintendent isn't comfortable with it, there's lots of question marks, what we. What we should do is have the conversation in April.
Ms. Chenoweth, can we just vote, please? Thank you.
I need to ask one clarification for the roll call because one of the topics has to do with the overture, sorry, the refunding of the audit money from '21-'22. And so there was just over a million dollars that the audit talks about returning. There are two pieces in the article, an agreement, that talk about what to do with that, up to 8% and then beyond that in terms of fund balance. So I want to make sure that I understand what the board is voting on because I believe there are some numbers, because our presentation doesn't say that, and our motion doesn't say that.
It's in there, and you know exactly what we're voting on.
And so I just want to make sure that we're clear-
You also know it's complete, so I don't know why you would tell Mrs. Cullen it was not complete.
Okay, you're the group producer.
I'd like to make sure that the board is aware of what they're voting on in terms of the refund of money, the $1.048 million that's on Slide 10, in terms of what we're voting on, so people know what they're doing, because that's separate from just the budget that was presented.
Doctor Bolton, what you're really saying is that you don't want the cafeteria renovated in the tech school because you want to send lunch back next year, and you want everybody to know that there's $800,000 in the capital fund to be able to take care of those three capital projects. Everyone is aware, it's in the presentation.
Is this just approving the budget or is it discussing the return of the-
It's approving the budget.
It's approving the budget.
So what about the $1 million? And was that $1 million because the budget was off versus the expenditures, because we paid more than what they actually used? Is that where the $1 million is coming from?
This is scary if we approve this tonight. This is bad fiscal management. We can't wait a month to discuss these issues.
We've already answered this question millions of times.
We have not answered the public's questions. No, there are still a lot of questions. There's no reason to rush this through for two weeks.
You already had a long conversation about how that million dollars was from the year before because there's always extra revenue. I'm answering the question.
I wasn't done speaking.
Which even on, there was $7.5 million that we were over here at Pen Ridge that same exact year. That's how it works. You don't budget and end up with exact numbers.
Just wait a month so we can discuss this.
Okay, hold on.
Do you think Mrs. Chenoweth called the roll?
Mrs. Chenoweth has been instructed to call the roll.
Wait, one moment, because a question was asked. No, a question was asked about whether this includes that, that over-
We just answered the question.
It does include the overage. It is in the budget presentation.
Okay, and to me, that's a completely separate item because that is something, again, that our business manager expressed differently.
What's it saying that they're doing with the overage? What does the budget say that it's doing with the overage?
It's in the budget and was provided to all board members this afternoon.
But what about the public?
And last Wednesday.
This afternoon?
See, the, so it was provided, that's my issue.
What time this afternoon?
Last Wednesday.
It was provided last Wednesday, when?
Ms. Chenoweth, would you call the roll, please?
No, we're not interested.
Let's just call the roll.
I just, again, I don't understand the unwillingness to answer simple questions and have a conversation and not make juvenile comments such as, you don't want the cafeteria at the tech school to be improved.
The chair has called the roll. Ms. Chenoweth, please present to the vote.
Mrs. Vance Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Batiski's absent. Mrs. Blomgren?
Yes.
Ms. Jakin?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
No.
Mr. Russell?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Wurz?
No.
Motion carries, 5-3. All right, next up we have the approval of the E-Rate Cisco Switch, motion to approve the E-Rate Cisco Switch refresh project. Give me a second, please.
Where are you?
Go ahead and go D.
Next, please, on D.
Oh, sorry, I jumped on D.
Go ahead and go D.
D.
There's a second from Mr. Cormac.
Thank you, Mr. Cormac. I get a motion, comments and questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to C. Approval contract, sorry about that. Items A through I. Could I get a second, please? Right, motion to approve the contracts A through I.
Second.
Thank you, sir. And comments or questions?
I just had a question on A for the pediatric therapeutic services. I know that it's for our related services, but Dr. Ball, I just had a question, when looking, they do have other services on there for different things, would we only be using it for like occupational speech or could we possibly use it? I don't know how it's worded in the contract, if that, if we have to use it in compensation, if we would. Looking at Ms. Summers to make sure I'm saying it correctly, we utilize them for occupational therapists, physical therapists, and speech therapists. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then that would be only, that would be like the basis. There's only like for social work, some different things like that. I'm just making sure that we're just using it for those three, and there won't be a case where then we would say, hey, we would, you know, extend that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the kids' care art agreement for the before and after schools daycare programs effective 7/1/2023 through June 30th, 2028. Could I get a second, please?
A second.
I hear two. Got a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the settlement with Juul Labs in the amount of $112,753, which is actually what, about $7,000?
$6,000, something like that.
That would be a back, that would be a return from the judgment.
I'll make a second.
Thank you, sir. Got a motion and a second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 11, 2023. Ms. Vance Clemmons, policy.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. First, we have a, we have a policy up for first read, which is Policy 119. I'll make a motion to approve that for first read along with the changes that were discussed, which Mrs. Summers is going to bring back to us that draft, and then that'll come to our next policy meeting with the, with those revisions for the second read.
Excellent. Motion and a second. Comments or questions?
I'm just going to withhold. I do support the policy. I think there were so many questions that went around and around, and since this is a first read, I'm going to hold off, and I would like to see it all in print and one clean copy.
Mr. President. Mr. Russell had a question about the, I think initially raised by Ms. Batiski, about the effect of the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment. There is a basic education circular, a BECC, which covers that issue, and it makes pretty clear that the protection of pupil rights law that regulates certain questions you can and can't be asked applies to programs regulated and funded by the Department of, the United States Department of Education, and that are administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. But because the PACE survey is administered by the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, PCCCD, it doesn't really apply to that, as I understand it, apply to that issue, Mr. Russell. So I just wanted to make sure that I answered that question for you.
Does the fact that it's administered in our schools, does that have any bearing on it? I mean, if they administered on their own, but they're using the conduit of our schools, our teachers, so it is being-
If it was a Department of Educ, federally funded Department of, Pennsylvania Department of Education passed through a program, that would be one thing it's not.
But so it doesn't impact it that we're using, you know, federally funded teachers or classrooms to administer it?
So far as I read the BECC, Mr. Russell, that doesn't make any exception for that. It's really a limitation on the federal power to connect, to collect that data, not the PCCDs, which is why it's been done for a couple of years.
So moving to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two notes? Motion carries, 62. Ms. Vance Clemmons.
Okay, next I'll make a motion to approve Policy 903 of public participation in board meetings. Since it is a final read, I'll read the specific changes that were made in the last committee meeting. One was that in the policy, the language would say shall sign up on the sign-up sheet as opposed to with the secretary. And the other was that you could, adding a line at the end of that paragraph that says you can sign up for the second common period up until that period.
I'll second.
I'll second that. I'll second that. I'm in favor of the changes that we made through Policy 8. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Are we going to get a new grade sheet now to read at the beginning of the reading?
Maybe. That's actually-
The next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 3rd.
On to the IU report.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. The IU met on March 21st, and I just have a few things to share based on that meeting. One, the audit came back, and we have a clean audit for the IU. One of the presentations was on the INSPIRE program. The INSPIRE program is for 8 to 14-year-old students with chronic or acute mental health concerns, and it's a behavioral health program where they have three hours of behavioral health and three hours of educational services. 18 students have come through the program. It's based at Samuel Everett, which is a, an IU school. The disorders require intensive treatment, and they're able to, it's another way that the IU tries to provide services and then is able to get coverage that's not necessarily, you know, taxpayer dollars. By bringing in and getting the coverage through Magellan, they're able to, they worked really hard to get all of the red tape and certifications that was needed to be able to get Magellan to cover a majority of it, and then if there's anything that's not covered, then that's picked up by the LEA, but it saves sending districts a great deal of money to be able to bring a lot of that through the health insurance. Another discussion was a great history lesson on Impressionism Art that started in New Hope in 1898 along the Delaware River. It was, everybody was coming here from France to Bucks County, and it became an art hub. There's a great deal of information. If anybody would want the whole history lesson, I'd be happy to share it with you. It was actually really interesting. And it's kind of started this whole trajectory of the Bucks County IU and Bucks County in general being a big hub for art. And a lot of things have developed over the years based on that, including the Art on the Move, which we've talked about before, where there's six paintings with curriculum that goes around to the different districts, and we can all opt into that. And one of our students is actually being recognized on March 29th for the Student Art Gallery reception, and I'll share more information on that in the pictures when we get to that point, or at the next meeting, since that'll be happening in between. Also, there's going to be summer camps at the Fab Lab, and I can see if we can have that information posted. I've shared a lot of that information in the past, but we can post the hours and ages in all of those pieces. Another thing I wanted to share with you is about the Wood Services was another program facility that was shared. Wood Services is a Bucks County residential treatment facility that serves children ages 5 to 21 with educational, behavioral, and mental supports on campus. There's limited opportunities for community and typical school experiences for many of these children. The Bucks IU works to have them attend off-campus educational programs. Attending classes in an inclusion environment provides increased educational options, an opportunity to experience peer models and a community connection, reduced isolation, and enhanced skill acquisition and generalization. The IU continues to be responsive and prides itself in being responsive to the needs of our school districts and personnel. Recently, the Bucks County English Language Development Advisory Council requested a specialized opportunity for ELD teachers and administrators where they could come together to network and learn from one another. The Bucks IU Programs and Services Team developed two full days of working sessions on best practices for supporting classroom teachers with resources, professional development deliverables, et cetera, family community engagement strategies, and supporting newcomers. The IU is also focused on supporting and developing the next generation. The Bucks IU occupational and physical therapists regularly support the training of the next generation of occupational therapists and physical therapist practitioners. Bucks IU staff supervise Level 1 and 2 graduate interns as they gain fieldwork experience, typically over six to 12 weeks, to help provide them with the necessary school-based clinical training required for them to meet the state and national certification standards to become an OT or PT practitioner. They also have many, the IU also has many professional development opportunities that are available on their website for districts to take advantage of. And the IU is meeting next on Tuesday, April 18th.
Thank you, Ms. Chenoweth. On to the tech school.
Good evening, again. This is really quick. This is the current stats for the tech school. Sorry, thank you. Okay, let's get back to current status for the tech school. 33,275 hours of work by our students in the community. They have a relationship with 83 employers. 96 students are in a program, and the average hourly wage is $14.89. What that really boils down to is since September 2022, the tech school students have earned over, almost close to a half a million dollars. I'm really proud of those folks. Industry placement, BNS Auto, Signal Controls, Cooper Mechanical, Montgomeryville Cycle Center, and Saint Luke's University Health Sector, and we have three students within the university health sector. So congratulations to the students. I think they're doing a great job. Our next meeting is April 20th, 2023.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cormac. PCF, Ms. Batiski's about here. Do you have-
Yeah, I will handle that when she communicated two things with me. First of all, PCF is sponsoring their second annual 24 tournament. So 24 is a math competition primarily among our elementary students. And so this Saturday, all of the champions from our seven elementary schools are coming together for a 24 tournament. So, and then Mr. Ball and I go and visit the champion and get whooped in 24 by a fourth grader, which is always a good time. The other reminder is about a lovely evening. Again, if you have not been there, it is a wonderful celebration of Pen Ridge education. All of the money raised comes right back into the classrooms, so there are no overhead costs for PCF. Everything comes straight back. That is on the 25th of April. It's at 6:30 at the Sellersville Theater. Ticket information is available on our website under the community tab. Thank you.
Thank you. On to public comments. All right, we have Mr. Foster, Kevin Foster, Hilltown.
Just a couple of odds and ends that I, observations I made during the meeting. The first one, Mrs. Vance Clemmons, on Policy 903, specifically this section that says, no participant may address or question board members individually. I believe, according to the Pensbury case, that is not enforceable, and I would ask that the board make a correction to that policy and remove that language. Based on my understanding, I'm sure you can talk to Mr. Miller about that. Secondly, a question from Mr. Russell. In your legal opinion, as an attorney, do you believe that it's ethical for the ILC or any other external entity to draft public policy behind closed doors?
Again, Mr. Foster, it's a comment.
That's okay. Yep, understood.
Continue going.
Yep, will do. And then Mrs. Blomgren, on Tuesday, September 27th, that quote, it was allegedly by Tiffany Jackson, so I did correct that. I'm still very curious as to where you read that material from.
Thanks, Mr. Foster.
And now, one, I'll finish. One final question, too. I reviewed the consent calendar and the bills list tonight, and I noticed that Eckert Siemens is not on the bills list for this evening, so I was just wondering if Mr. Miller is working pro bono this month.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, for that moment of levity. Next up, we have Lee Rush.
Mr. Miller, you appreciate levity. I mean, you're one of the most humorous people sometimes I've seen up here, so sometimes your jokes are pretty good, sometimes they fall flat. But every now and then, we need some humor, some lightness. It's heavy. It's heavy, heavy, heavy time tonight. Tonight, I think we saw a pretty raw example of power. The problem when you have the majority votes and you have the power, you can listen for as long as you want and then call a vote. Roberts, you know, rules allows that. But you're all Republicans. Doesn't matter if you're all Republicans or Democrats, you're all school board members. I think Ms. Cullen raised it months ago about just what's happening right now about the split, whether it's social studies or tech school budgets or policy. I think, I want to believe you're better than this. You're better, you're better listeners, better problem solvers, better examples of how to negotiate conflict. And to see people talk over each other, make accusations about people's agendas and motives, I'm just going to keep imploring you to, to either get some outside help or consulting, you know, because another six, seven months before, you know, the election, it's just, it's just not fun to be witnessing it. I don't think it's fun for any of you to be involved in those kind of power struggles and see what happens. So I hope you take heed of that two-cent suggestion. My final minute, I just want to make a request of the, of the board. Last August, I was part of a group of Pennridge citizens for direct representation. There were seven petitioners that petitioned our local court of common pleas in Doylestown. Our hearing was held on January 17th. This is all a matter of public record now. The transcript was put in the public domain a few weeks ago. On February 18th, the court directed each party to submit their final findings of fact and conclusions of law. Our, our public citizen's document is now part of public record. I'm going to ask, I want to thank the board for putting a place on your placeholder on the website where all these documents are placed for public consumption. So I'm going to ask hopefully that those documents can be put up there now that they're public, the transcript and the findings of fact. The seven petitioners, Low Stotzen and Jim Ryder, Presidents of Percasie and Stellersville Borough Councils, they were acting in their own personal interest, not on behalf of their elected official position. The other petitioners, Joe Ferry, former PR director, my brother Brooke Rush, Jeremy Shipman, and Chrisanne Swartley. I humbly ask that you allow the public to view those documents so people can make informed decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to old business. Is there any old business?
Yes, I mean, Mr. Rush brought it up again. I would like to say that we have, there have been numerous attempts to have the board come together. Every year, you're supposed to have a retreat where you establish your board norms and your procedures, and you kind of discuss as a group how you're going to move forward for the year. That typically takes place in the winter, you know, January, February, depending on people's schedules. And I have asked every month, more than once a month, whether we're going to have that board retreat to discuss our board norms, establish them, and, you know, do some team building to, to work better together, and I have not gotten a response.
Any other old business?
Based on one of the public comments, and Mr. Miller, please correct me if I'm incorrect, where it says in our policy, it says, "All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually." My understanding, based on the Pensbury case, is they can still talk about board members, which is the part of our policy that had to be changed, where it said, "Any comments about individuals need to be sent to the board and can't be stated publicly." I believe that all of that needs to be changed, but even if they are commenting about other board members or about other people, they still need to direct the comments to the presiding officer. Isn't that correct?
Mrs. Vanis Clemmons, I've been pretty, one, I'm comfortable with the draft of policy 903 as it sits here tonight, and that it meets the requirements of the Pensbury case. But secondly, I've been pretty clear to everyone, people have asked from the floor and to the board members, that I will provide my legal advice privately to the board because that's what you pay me for. So I will respond to the board via email, but I'm comfortable that the draft of the policy is fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business? Moving on to new business. Any new business? Seeing them? Move on to announcements. Executive session was held on March 6th, 2023 to discuss security and potential litigation matters, and March 20th, 2023, to discuss the student situation involving potential litigation. The next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 24th, 2023. Make a motion to adjourn.
I just want to make one correction. I apologize that the agenda, we did update it on the Board docs version, the old version that's printed out there. The next meeting has been moved to Wednesday, April 26th.
Yes, thank you.
And that was decided back in February, but so that has been updated on our calendar, but we did put the wrong date originally in the Board docs. Okay? So it's Wednesday, April 26th.
Thank you. Now, we are adjourned. Same.